Good to go.
Announcement is made that out of notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 that sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jostkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mozzarella.
Here.
Mr. Ratty.
Present.
Chairman Iraquin.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
Let's start off with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. We have correspondence. Wait a minute.
We haven't announced it.
Oh, um, application 2273, Robert Connors 154, Rainbow Trail, C-Variance constructed two-story addition, et cetera. This application is being carried to April 19th at 7:00 PM. Is there anybody that's here for the Connors application in Rainbow Lakes? No? Okay. Then we have, um, correspondence, Mr. O'Neil withdrawing application 32. What was this?
This is an application we have not heard yet.
Oh, okay.
But it went through the review process.
Okay. All right. Do we need a?
Partway through.
Which just withdrawn, that's nothing.
We didn't hear anything.
So nothing has to be done, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, okay, we got application 2230, Chad Hembree, 578 Lake Shore Drive. It's a variance to construct an open deck with landing and stairs, entranceway, no roof, with stairs to rear and stairs to front. It's carried from December 14th. Is, uh, Mr. Hembree here? Please come forward.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about to give before the board, so his help you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Chad Hembree, H-E-M-B-R-E-E.
Yes.
You're the owner of the subject property, 578 Lake Shore Drive. And you're sworn to thank you. Have a seat, please speak into the microphone. Mr. Cameron, witness has been sworn.
You have the application. Somebody steals the papers out of my file cabinet. I just want to see what it is.
Mr. Hembree has an updated review from the township engineer. We should all have.
Okay, so you're looking for a side yard variance of zero, a yards and courts open deck. You're looking for an increase in that, an increase in pervious coverage. So you want, you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yeah, starting in, excuse me, starting in the backyard, I'm looking to make my back deck just a little wider to meet the width of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And that's basically the idea there, just to, uh, just to host and, uh, and things like that. Um, and, uh, and what's there now is just, it's old and it's really starting to rot and it's starting to become unsafe. So we're, we'd like to replace that. And then on the side, um, well, the dimensions of that's going to be 20 by 16, which, um, that's going to be, I'm not sure what the square footage is off the top of my head as far as additional square footage, but, um, that's going to be about another five feet wider than what's currently there. And the, on the side is the front porch. I'm looking to enlarge that because currently it's not, uh, large enough to even open up a storm door and, um, and as it currently is, it's kind of awkward that the steps face towards my backyard. So as you approach, uh, my home, you have to kind of go around and up the stairs. It's just a really awkward, uh, looking front porch. So we're just looking to make that a little bit larger to accommodate a storm door and really, uh, make better curb appeal and, um, that's what we're looking to do.
Well, one thing you have going against you here is you only have a 40 by 100 lot in a 60 by 100 zone, so it does give you some constraints.
Sure.
Um, and that's the logical place to put the stairs, right? I mean, that's, yeah, it's strange. There's no alternative. Have you discussed it with your next door neighbor? Like how close is your next door neighbor's house? Do you think it's going to be any inconvenience to them?
We, uh, I haven't spoken to him about it, but, um, his, it's the side of the house he doesn't, or they don't use, and so, um...
So you're not going to be bothering anybody?
No, they, they don't use it as a walkway very often unless, I mean, very rarely. They park on the other side of their property and go in their home and into the backyard from the other side. It's very rarely used.
Do you, um, you're, the deck, is it going to be spaces between the boards? You're not going to do tongue and groove, right?
No.
Okay. What's underneath it?
Uh, what's underneath it currently?
Under the deck, you're, what, is it, is there dirt underneath there or?
Yeah.
So you will have some drainage there, so even though it's, there's a degree of impervious coverage, you'll have some seepage through the, probably 85% of it will go between the boards and down.
A larger amount, yes.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
So when we carried this, we wanted, we asked them to bring an updated review with accurate numbers about the pavers and also to identify where the rain garden is going.
Yes. So the, uh, the pavers, uh, the, um, square footage of the walkway that it's going to be created is going to be 80 square feet, um, created by the walkway there. And the, um, the rain garden is going to be, um, I guess if you're facing, if your back is to the, um, back is to the home, it would be in the far left corner of the property, which is 30, which should be about 30 feet off of the, uh, the home.
And I see you've worked with the engineer and you and him came together with where that should be?
Yes.
And he is happy as we see in this letter?
Yes, I sent him a survey with the dimensions and, uh, yeah, he was, uh, okay with it, yes.
Okay. Chad, I don't think we have that survey, but we do have the, uh, March 3rd, 2023 letter from the engineer who says that he received it and he is, you know, it's acceptable. Okay.
Dave, are you okay now over here? Dave, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I don't love the fact that 50% of the property is covered, but I do appreciate the updates.
Any questions over here? Any other questions? Mr. Holloway, you have any questions?
No questions.
The engineering side, everything looks cool?
I'm happy with it.
Uh?
No questions.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the information provided this evening? I hear none and see none. Is there anything else you'd like to add? No. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application, in support of the application? I hear none and see none. Um, is it, is it, can someone make a comment about the application? I mean, I know it's excessive amount of impervious coverage, but the deck...
Even though it's excessive amount, I think for me personally, being that he, he did work with the engineer and the engineer did write the letter that he thought it was fine and in the right place and aesthetically the sidewalk, the way you're doing the steps makes sense, I will be voting for it.
Someone frame a resolution?
Application 22 column 30, Chad Hembree, 578 Lake Shore Drive, block 360, lot number 21, zone R dash four to issue or grant a variance to construct an open deck with landing and stairs, entranceway with no roof, with stairs to rear and stairs in front contrary to section 430 dash 35, column eight and 13, and section 430 dash 10 high. And, uh, incompetence are in accordance with the engineering report.
Second, Jostkowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jostkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ratty.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Result is the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and then you'll be free to proceed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, um, next application is Patel, 29 Brandon Lane.
Sir, ma'am, you're both going to testify?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. You swear firm testimony about to give before the board, so his help you got? And for the record, you're Jatyn and Nisha Patel. Okay, thank you, you're sworn. Have a seat, please speak into the microphone. Mr. Chairman, the witnesses are sworn.
You want to construct a patio, walk, open decks and stairs and seating wall contrary to section 430 dash 35, et cetera. You are in a PRD, um, and, um, you need a rear yard, is existing 13 allowed as 10 and proposing four impervious coverage, 35.34 is existing, 40 is allowed and 48.16 is proposed. Want to tell us about what you'd like to do? I just want to look and see, you have 10, 9,000 square foot lot and what?
You have two front yards.
What zone is this? What's on PRD two? Is that the?
That's 1000.
Oh, okay. What's, what's normal for that?
Lots over size. I think it's 7500.
7500.
8,000.
Okay, so you have a conforming.
26.
Okay. You have a conforming lot, so why don't you tell us what you want to do?
So, so as you said, right, our lot is odd size and the backyard is, uh, in a different type of a shape. Uh, we, so many years we never used our backyard and we have, uh, elderly parents who live with us, so in summer we would like to use that backyard. Uh, if we construct a good patio so they can have a, uh, some kind of a recreation back there and family and friends can get together. Uh, the, we know, we are, we are, uh, going above the limits, but the backside of our backyard is, uh, our, all the neighbors have a high, high eight, each eight, eight-foot fence, so it's not...
They shouldn't have an eight-foot fence.
Uh, maybe six. I, I haven't measured, so, so, uh...
It's safe.
They, they have, no, I, I mean, I haven't measured, so it's my personal judgment.
The critical relation is more coverage. How are you going to build the patio? Will water be able to go through the stones or is it going to be sealed?
So the, the plan is to have a, uh, underlying perforated PVC pipe and, and put it into, uh, take, take the water out, out, out towards the, the slope so it won't harm anybody or flood anybody.
So you're saying the water will go through the patio?
Yes.
Stone. They won't be crowded?
It will be gravelled and, and...
Crowded?
Grouled, yeah.
It will not?
Uh, I mean, the, we have received the, uh, instruction from, from the township and says...
The engineer?
Yeah, engineering. And, uh, it says, uh, all underground roof layers, pipe, discharge will be switched pipe, uh, to the pits, shall be constructed using perforated pipes and placed, and so we'll, we'll follow the same guidelines.
You're agreeing with the doctor? Okay. Can you agree that the construction of the patio will allow water to go through the patio stone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which basically is a remediation to the coverage.
Do you have, neighbors have any?
Yeah, we have taken a signature from the neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the patio, is it going to be a paver patio? Is that...
Yes, it will be a paver patio. We are not constructing a concrete.
Okay, so now my other question is you have proposed concrete walks from the driveway to the patio from the right side of the driveway around to the back, and then if I'm reading this correct, you have a proposed walk from Brandon Lane to the front to another proposed walk that goes all the way around the house, both sides?
No, we are doing only one side, the outside side.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just reading, what it says on here, it says it's...
Yes, it says here, but to save the, I mean, go here to the 40% allowance variance, we'll be just constructing on one side, the walkway.
So which side are you constructing? From the right side of the driveway to the patio?
Yes.
And then how much, so this 48 proposed, is that counting the one that's on here?
Yes, yes.
So it's going to be less than 48%? Do we know how much less?
Uh, it will be around like, uh, 300, uh, not, not 300, probably 200 square feet less. The walkway is right now 600 and 5, so we'll be, we'll be constructing half of the walkway.
All right.
Only one side, you mean?
Only one side, yes.
And the, uh, front of the house?
Front of the house, not the backside, which we will, we may not use.
Trying the driveway, sir?
Yes.
But you're still going to have one from Brandon Lane to the front of the house?
Yes.
And then that's going to go from there also to the driveway? You're just going to get rid of the side from, that goes from the front of the house to the left and around the back?
Around, around the one, we are not...
All right, so you're not going around the side of the house on the backside?
Yes.
Okay.
These are all proposed. These are all proposed. He's going to do away with this one?
Yeah.
Got you. Okay.
Any other questions by the board?
What do you, what do you have going to your front door now? Do you know what?
Right now, right now we have just, uh, stones, uh, the, the stone tiles all over the grass and it's, it's a little bit...
Inconvenienced for the elderly people to walk.
Especially in the bed, wow.
Now, you're putting, where you're putting the patio in the back, you're going to be
awfully close to your neighbors. Do, do both of them have fences?
Yes.
Yes, both of them have fences.
And we have checked with them and they're fine.
And we, we personally discussed and my wife, uh, went to them and took their signatures also.
Okay. That's all I have.
Do we have to update our notes that is not, they're not building on the left side of the house?
It's going to be a resolution.
Yeah, because that changes the permit.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
No? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Is it a good application, gentlemen?
Very.
Gentlemen?
Yeah, great.
Good? You like it?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody frame a resolution?
Application 22 column 53, Jatyn and Nisha Patel, 29 Brandon Lane, block number 734. Dot 09, lot number 15, zone PRD dash two. We issue or grant a C variance to construct patio, walks, open deck with stairs and seating wall contrary to section 430 dash 35, column nine and 13, and in contrary to the engineering report, as the client agreed, applicant agrees with the engineering report.
Second, Jostkowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jostkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ratty.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Results, variance is granted, we'll memorialize this at our next meeting and you'll be free to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Okay, let's call application 2257, Ali Razam Malik, 58.20, C variance to construct/legalize a new three-story single-family dwelling.
Are both you going to testify or just one? Can you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about to give before the board, so his help you got? And for the record, you're Ali Razza?
Yes.
And you're the owner of the subject property known as 58 Conde Avenue. Thank you, sir, you're sworn. If you have a seat, please speak into the microphone. Sir, your purpose is moral, moral support?
Yeah.
Okay, because you cannot testify unless you're sworn.
Okay, so, for starters, let's take a look at, you're in R4 zone, your lot coverage, your lot area is only 4,000, which is substandard. Um, you're allowed 2.5 stories and you're proposing three stories.
Yeah, it's a plus, minus second floor and an attic. I mean, it's not a finished attic, but it's a unfinished attic.
Please speak into the microphone.
Um, how do you get up there?
Seven.
How do you get to the attic?
It's not, it's, it's a full stairs, you know, the...
Full downstairs?
Yeah, full downstairs for storage purposes and for, um, furnaces, put the furnace there, AC system, ducting goes there.
Anything else? Is it heated air, air conditioning or?
Only...
Eat it because of the furnace is in?
Yeah, only furnace and that's pretty much it.
So ductwork?
Will be ductwork, which is going to be going to the second floor.
So I, I see, um, we granted you a variance on September 29th, 2021.
Yes.
That was to build the house.
Yes.
And you decided to build the house differently than we agreed?
Not exactly. What happened, so, uh, there was, that we, we had the addition initially. So when we dig the new part of the house and we find out there is no, uh, foundation under the existing house, that was built only on the slab, green slab, and we had to dig the foundation underneath because we was going for two-story building on top. And, uh, so that's why we dig the new foundation underneath the existing house also. Now it doesn't consider addition houses, consider now the new house. That's why we had to go through the, uh, 6,000 square foot, it is for 40 by 100 lot.
So you were technically doing a renovation and now you're doing a new construction?
Now it's going to be considered new construction because the old house didn't have any foundation underneath. It was just built on the slab, a, a three inch slab.
Did you take the old house down then?
Uh, most, most of it is down, only one wall was there, which fell down automatically.
So once that wall was removed, every glass up I do?
Even before that, you know?
Okay. How did you get here?
How did I get here?
Yeah, who sent you? Who, who squirrel on you?
Well, it still isn't a three-story house yet, but that attic is not being improved. You didn't lift the sides, did you? I mean, is it, are there walls to this attic?
There is, it will be unfinished. Uh, there's no walls in the attic, but just, it's going to be just attic as a, we can use as a storage and there will be furnace there and with the duct.
And you get there by a full downstairs?
We're going to get there by full downstairs.
No basement in house?
No.
No basement?
Is, is this exist now yet or you finished it yet?
No, we didn't even start it yet.
You didn't even start it yet?
Knocked down.
We started it, then we had to stop it because we had to go, we got the letter...
And found out you needed a...
You, you, the foundation is in?
No.
No?
Not, I mean, we start digging and we find out, you know, it's, uh, we have to go through the...
So what's, what's different other than you had to take out a foundation? Is the house you're building, what we approved?
It is the same exact house.
Everything else is the same, other than some wall came down or foundation or something?
We had to dig the foundation on the old part.
He would, he would have avoided the affordable housing fee if they kept this under the construction code as renovation. Now it's new, he will not.
Well, I just wonder, who's determining, who's, what's the determination to make it three stories?
Oh, I don't, I have no idea. I mean... This story is...
The way he's described it is an attic.
So the, the roof line go, the roof line touches the bottoms of the, your attic, correct?
Yes.
There's no wall and it's...
No, there's no wall.
You can't stand, you can maybe stand very softly.
I mean, you cannot stand it, but you can walk, you have to bend yourself to walk.
And there's no floor on it?
No, no.
There's going to be no floor?
Yeah, no.
Do you know what the height is going to be? From the ground level to the peak?
25 feet. It should be on the plans.
So, so it didn't have a basement previously, did it?
No, it didn't have a basement.
Now you're putting a basement in?
No, he said no.
It will be again on the slab?
Oh, well, because I got it when you said you're putting a foundation, I just assumed you were putting a basement to make the third floor.
We'll just make the trench and pour the concrete.
My point is this is a technicality. Yes.
Okay.
Once you take the last wall down?
It's new.
It's new.
Yes, new.
That is going to pay some affordable housing fee.
35 feet.
You move on.
No, technically it is...
One and a half, we said, 35 feet.
This is not a basement, I mean.
So this is not a basement?
Bernie's saying he can up to 35.
No, but, uh, 35 is okay, but if, if we don't consider as a basement, it becomes a floor. And it is three floors, no?
No.
The first floor is on the slab.
Yeah.
The first floor is on the slab and we have a second floor.
Oh, okay.
And then the third is attic.
Unfinished.
Unfinished attic.
But you can't stand it.
And, and your house is somewhat, it's somewhat shaded from the street, right? I mean, you have vegetation between you and the, the house and the street or the trees and stuff there in front of you?
No, there's no trees.
There's no trees? Were there trees at one time when you took them down or?
No, there wasn't just little bushes, with no trees.
Okay.
That's a three-story.
Then how come the application exists?
As you see, the township engineer's report stated October 6th of last year. Do you recall seeing that?
Yes.
He, he wants you to do some stormwater?
Yes, I already submitted a permit for that and it's already...
And the roof leaders all go into those?
Into the storm, yeah.
And the soil movement prevent, you're going to get from engineering.
Yep.
And you get that yet or no?
Um, I already submitted the application to the engineering and, uh, it is partially approved.
Okay, but you're processing?
Yes.
And this last item is a flood zone.
It is not.
You out with that?
It is not a flood zone.
It is not?
I mean, in my record, it's not.
Well, there's a township map that shows whether you are or not in flood zone and you need to address that because I assume, I assume you're going to have all motor insurance and if all motor insurance comes up, we'll get it unless you...
I have a regular insurance, it doesn't require a flood zone insurance.
Okay, well, you'll discuss that with the engineer then.
Okay.
Yeah, according to engineer, no part of it is located in flood zone.
Yeah, so, these maps are subject to interpretation, I guess.
I was, I was once told on Beverly Road I needed flood insurance, so don't go by everything, yeah.
It's one night of a flood to get up that hill.
I know.
Yeah.
It's probably when it was a lake there.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. Uh, so. I'm just gonna ask you, you're gonna comply with the engineer's report?
Yes.
Okay. And including, if necessary, this flood thing. Okay. Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add? No? Are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none, see none. It's kind of a technical clarification, isn't it, guys?
Exactly.
But officially, can we call like a three-story? Uh, two-story and, uh, what?
I don't think it should be referred to as three-story.
Right.
It's a two-story.
It's a two-story. But it doesn't really matter, does it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
You wanna do, you wanna do a resolution, Mr. Jaskowitz?
Sure, application twenty-two, call fifty-seven, fifty-seven. Ali Raza Malik, fifty-eight Conde Avenue. Lot five sixty-one, lot twenty-nine, zone R four, recommend granting a C variance. Think construct or legalize a new two-story, single-family dwelling, contrary section. Four thirty dash thirty-five, columns two, three, and eleven. And in agreement with all recommendations and requests by the engineering department.
Second, ready.
Any discussion or call the roll?
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Irakun.
Yes. Results variance is granted. We will memorialize this at our next meeting. Good luck. It's called case twenty-two seventy-five, Gavin and Valerie Spector. Six West Heading Place, construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with three-car garage. Three-car garage.
Come on up. Can you, are both you gonna testify? Raise your right hand, you swore firm testimony about to give before the boards to yourself you got. And for the record, you are Gavin and Valerie Spector. And you're the owners of Six West, uh, Heading Place.
Yes.
All right, thank you. You're sworn. Have a seat, please speak in the, uh, microphone.
So. Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've got a twenty-eight hundred square foot lot and a fifteen thousand square foot zone. No?
No, it is.
Mount Tabor.
Yeah, the, it's a very special place.
Or three?
Yeah, we skipped that one. It's not the Connors, it's, um.
You got lot width of sixty-four and you're only allowed a hundred.
Carrie's April.
Front yard, you got six point nine feet, where forty is allowed.
Yes.
Side yard, ten allowed, three proposed. Both yards, side yards, twenty feet, fourteen feet is proposed. Rear yard, twenty feet, you're proposing three point five feet. Accessory, rear yard, A C unit, and landing. Allowed ten and propose three five. I'll tell you, I haven't seen this many variances in a long time. Building coverage fifty percent, you're gonna go for sixty percent.
Oh, my God. Is there anything on the property now?
Um, it.
Some bricks, there was a house there.
It burnt down in two thousand seven, but it's just been a vacant lot since then.
Let me finish this, okay? Impervious coverage thirty percent allowed, you're proposing seventy-four percent. Plan and design standards, twenty-four is allowed, you're proposing thirty-six. Plan and design standards, driveway setback, five feet, you're proposing four point three. So. You gonna tell us all about this?
Um, well, uh, I moved here in ninety-one to Mount Tabor. And we've been residents here and since then. Uh, we love precipitating, we love Mount Tabor, and we wanna build our forever home in Mount Tabor.
We got lucky in that there was a vacant lot there and that we could build our dream home.
Yeah.
You're not leaving a whole lot of. You're not gonna, you're not gonna eat a lawnmower, that's for sure.
So, um, our engineer is with us here today. And we put in, uh, the oversized cisterns under the driveway to hopefully help with the, the drainage and all that. And it's also tied to the, um, the main drain there.
So the storm source?
Uh, yes.
Is there a survey of the property? Just a basic survey? There seems to be.
Um, yes.
We do have one on file.
A, a, a regular survey and a topo.
Is the topo a part of this set?
Um.
Oh, yeah, great.
Yeah, there is.
The properties to either side of you. The plans you submitted does not show any location of buildings either side of you. I assume there are.
Um, so to the, the west side, um, there is just a, a backyard there. Um, to the, to the other side, there is a house, which is why we set the house, um, eleven feet in.
Okay.
So that, that should be, uh, that's actually not a variance.
Okay.
Um, behind us, there is also a house that is, um.
That's their backyard?
Yeah, that's their backyard as well. So those, those two sides are compliant.
This area looks like it's fairly level. As compared to most of Mount Tabor, which is.
It's, yeah, for Mount Tabor, it's not bad.
Uh, I'm looking at the house to the west. It's gonna be. I mean, you got one foot conduit, so it's a little bit higher than you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And the house to the east. Is downhill.
Um.
And the house in the back is roughly the same as you.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It's a full rocky slopes.
Yes.
From west to east.
Yeah, so the, the heading place.
I guess you have to talk to the board about what the house, is it a drive-in? Talk to your neighbors at all?
Yeah, um, most of them seem happy that something's gonna get built on the lot.
They know what's gonna be built?
Um, yeah, we've, uh, you know, neighbors have walked by and said hi, and we've talked to them about it. We sent out all the, um, the notifications. Um, and, yeah, so far, so good.
And no negative feedback to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
Nor anybody come to the office and look at?
Well, we had a couple people come in, one person was interested, um, I believe he's here tonight, and someone else who. Hmm, made comments, or they say that.
The attic, is that it? Are those false stormers or are those?
Yeah, they're, I think they're called floating dormers. The, on the second level, it'll be a vaulted ceiling, so there actually isn't an attic.
How does the house go with the general neighborhood?
Well, one thing we wanna do is that we do wanna fit in. So, um, uh, an example of this is that when we tried to look into like vinyl siding, it's all very neutral, very browns and grays.
The colors.
And it's like, well, that's not gonna fit into Mount Tabor. So we're gonna paint the house, you know, purple, pink, and get the gingerbread trim and really.
So is, is it Victorian style looking front?
Yes.
It'll have a veranda, which like every house in Mount Tabor, I think is required to have one. So it'll, it'll fit right in.
The, the front of the house will have like a little porch in the front with railing?
Yes.
And you've got. Six windows, are those all, uh, opening sliders or?
Either, either three French doors or maybe a slider, still, still deciding on that.
Just big.
Yeah.
And the fact that you have a three-car garage, other than who wouldn't want it? Is it because the house is that wide, so if you could do it, do it?
Well, you know, uh, we want this to be our forever home, and we don't wanna outgrow it in any stage of life, so, you know.
Well, it just takes away from the, from the basement.
Right.
Would have been a basement.
It's not really affecting anybody other than them.
No, if you have three cars, you gotta garage three corners. You really don't have a basement on your.
Yeah.
Explain the second floor is all conceit, that these will see. So there is, you know. Doesn't have anything showing that. So there is no attic?
There's no attic.
No attic, no basement.
Any questions over on the right?
No, sir.
Questions on the left?
The question that the, that the drainage plant, so everything is tied into the storm inlet in the front. It seems to be. A storage capacity of a storage unit, and then it ties in. I just wondering if, um, the. In the trench range that are shown here. If then, if they are in combination with the roof drains, I didn't know if they need to be filtered at all. Because we didn't wanna get any debris or, or anything from the driveway into the recharge pit. So I didn't know if you needed some kind of filter on, on those units.
Chaz, would the town engineer be advising them on that?
Uh, yes, town engineer can take care of that.
And you agree that you will adhere to the request and, and, uh, all his six, I guess it's six things that he had suggested or whatever?
Yes.
You'll agree with all those requirements?
You know, if you have your engineer here and you want him to testify to any of these points, all we have to swear a minute, okay? So, just so you know.
Like to hear from him?
Well, I. You've agreed with the township engineer's report?
Yes.
Are you gonna landscape this property?
Yeah, there's not much to landscape.
So, so, yeah, if I could hop in there, I'm sorry. Um, so we get seventy-four, seventy-four percent impervious coverage proposed and sixty percent building. I look at it, it looks like a beautiful home, don't get me wrong, with all shared these map. I looked at the three-car garage and if we're questioning the amount of impervious coverage, if you cut the house at that second garage, so you have one, two, and then the whole length of the house, you'd be much further under. Total building coverage and impervious coverage.
Then you don't have the house that you want.
You don't have the house.
I understand that, but we, we talk a lot about the impervious coverage and building coverage and, you know. And we all know Tabor is very tight and.
But they are.
I'm just, you know, that's just, I'm just throwing it out there, it's my thought on it, that's all. It's a lot of space.
That's, it, it.
I don't have the house I want. If I could build this on my lot, I'd be fine.
This is a two-bedroom lot.
Yes.
Any other questions? Can I open it?
I'm just, I'm kinda curious as to. Mister Liza's number two, where he writes, the applicant should reduce the amount of impervious coverage to comply with the zoning requirements. I'm wondering if that's in order to comply, which is a no-brainer, or if that's a recommendation to actually cut the amount of impervious coverage? I mean, seventy-four is a ton. Now, I know it's Mount Tabor. But seventy-four is a ton. Seems like tonight we're just paving over precipitating. How are you reading that? I don't know how to read it, that's, that's my point. How are you reading it, Chaz? I don't know.
Are you talking about number, number two?
Talking about number two, what he writes. But the applicant should reduce the amount of impervious coverage to comply with zoning requirements. I don't know if that's a recommendation to reduce the amount of impervious coverage. Or if it's just an F Y I, if you wanna be within the impervious coverage zoning requirements. You're stating that. Which we know. Yes. Like, we don't need to write that there, so I'm wondering why he wrote that.
But I, I re, I, I interpret it as if it's gonna be this much over, don't forget we have to mitigate it.
Right.
Take care of the drainage.
You're stating that.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Reduce everything to a correct percentage.
Long as he deals with the runoff.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not the best of situations, but believe me, I've heard many, many, many applications in Mount Tabor. And it.
And I know it's tough there, but I also wanna balance cramming in everything you want just because you want it. But it's, I mean, it's a two-bedroom house, he's not asking for a five-bedroom.
No, I guess. It's not a big house.
We cannot run out to any smaller than that.
How many square feet of living space will it be, you know?
About two thousand.
Two thousand? That's not a big house.
Not at all.
That's not a big house. Anything smaller than that, you might as well buy a small house in Lake Huron.
It is a townhouse, so it's.
Um, can I open it up to members of the public for questions? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? Questions by members? You have, you have a question to ask? Please come upstairs, identify yourself, and please use the microphone.
Sir, for the record, can you state your name and address?
Eric Mun.
Pull it out. Eric, E R I C K?
E R I C, uh, E R I C. Mun, M U N N, uh, Six Strobridge, Mount Tabor. I guess my question is on the second story, which goes up to a third story, although it's clear story. Do you need to have that height cuz it makes it out of scale with everything else on the street? That's just my question.
You want the pitch on the roof to be dropped?
Yes. But it is, uh, it meets the requirement of the height.
Can that be done?
It can be. Uh, the pitch was selected to, to fit into the, like, Victorian, cuz Victorians usually has a kind of like a stupor.
But how about if you go around the neighborhood in terms of the way this house will look compared to other houses and the height and the pitch and everything?
Mount Tabor has a variety of different pitches and different styles, like some where they're like has.
How about either side of you? What, what are they?
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
Either side of you.
Um, to, well, the, the one side's just the backyard, so there's nothing there. Uh, uh, to the other side. They have. He's got a pretty.
I think it's similar.
It's similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, our direct neighbor's similar. Across the street is, uh, is like a, like a two-stage roof, where it like goes like that and then.
Yeah, bro.
Yeah.
Do you know what the pitch is on the roof?
Not exactly.
Can I, can I ask a question of the, can you come back up, please?
I'm sitting on the end.
In, in relationship to your house, in this house, what, what is the, how far away from your house is this house?
Uh, let's see, we are. One, two, three, I guess they would be the fourth house?
Fourth house.
Yeah, fourth house now.
The, the pitch on, the roof on this house, is it going to block your view of a?
No, I'm just thinking of aesthetics of the neighborhood.
Well, the, the applicant is saying that it fits in, so now we have it, we're in a quandary, you know, that.
I know, it's a difference.
Next to him is about that height that he's building, would you agree with that?
Uh, but that height, but that house is further up the hill, so it is the same height, but their house. You know.
So.
Yeah.
Got you.
Same height, but different landscape.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Do you think you wanna bring your engineer up to talk to us? Maybe he can shed some light on this?
We also have our architect.
Oh, that's perfect, bring the architect. Yes.
Architect we want. Uh, sir, raise your right hand, you swore firm testimony about to give before the boards to yourself you got.
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Brian Howells, B R I A N, H O W E L L S.
And you are an architect?
Yes.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect in the state of New Jersey?
No, they're not. That is why I'm here, supporting them because they're close friends.
Okay.
Rather than appealing as the architect.
So.
Have you testified before boards before in your?
Yes, I have, but not in New Jersey.
So you're, you're kinda retired now, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
But you've had, you've been an architect in other states, in New Jersey, correct?
Architect throughout the world. I'm Australian. I've been here thirty-five years.
I thought you were from South Jersey.
They don't talk like that in South Jersey.
No, but, but.
Way south.
So you've, how many years of experience as an architect have you, um, had? Thirty years?
Do I have to be honest about that?
Uh, yes, you're under oath.
Um, probably at this point. Fifty-five to sixty.
And you're familiar with the, um, architectural standards in New Jersey and the states?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, Mr. Trim, he would be qualified based upon his history, his experience and knowledge.
So tell us, tell us about this, the roof and.
The roof pitch is forty-five degrees.
Okay.
The reason for that is because it is a cathedral ceiling inside. And hence, the space we're trying to create there is actually the whole floor, the second floor, is cathedral ceiling, running right through it. It's effectively a great room because we had to squeeze everything we could into the first floor. With only two bedrooms plus living space. And then the great room that just didn't fit on the first level is now on the second level. And it encompasses the entire level except for a bathroom. At the, um, eastern end, we have, my east or west? The western end, the whole end of the floor is actually opened out to a, an open deck area. area within the, the same space of the building.
I, I'm gonna assume you've visited the property? You've seen the property?
Many times, yes.
Okay. In your recollection, recollection of visiting the property, would you say this roof design is not contrary to the general look of the neighborhood? I'm not asking if it fits in, but what I'm saying is it's, it's not gonna have like golden arches of, you know, or something like that, right?
No, no, no golden arches.
Okay.
No, the, the roof pitch actually, um, was selected to cover both its aesthetic within the, the area that it's in, because it is definitely a Victorian building.
Right.
Um, we also have the three dormers there, which is another reason to keep it a little higher, to give those dormers space internally, visually, I'm talking about spaces type everywhere, but we've tried to make it a very open, air home with, and comfortable as we could, within the constraints of the site, but as you know, is somewhat constrained.
Questions by the board?
Could, I'm sorry, could you comment on those six windows at the front of the house? Well, they're not windows, they're six panels.
Those panels are actually all doors, pinged doors opening out onto the terrace. You can see in the...
I, I can see what how they function. I'm trying to get these six doors, get the context with the Victorian design.
It's, that is why we went for that, rather than just making a very large open glass panel, which obviously architecturally does not fit into a Victorian era. These doors would have, um, as you, you can sort of see there, they would have, um, muttons and mullions in them.
And there's a porch roof over it, which means...
And the porch roof is partially open, that's correct, yes.
Okay, alright.
So, this is like a modern Victorian?
Uh, pseudo.
Pseudo.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the gentleman who had questions before. Do you have, have any questions of this architect?
I'm curious why you have to have...
You have to come up and use a microphone, though, cause it's gotta be recorded.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, what's the interior height of that second floor for your, for your great room? I'm just, from floor to ceiling, floor to peak, no, floor to peak.
The width of it is twenty feet.
Right, but how high up does it go from this...
Forty-five degrees, so half of that is eleven.
So, it's eight plus eleven, so it's nineteen feet high?
Thereabouts.
Okay. Seems excessive.
That's not a question.
No, I, I'm sorry, was I not allowed to?
It's okay.
We'll give, if you wanna speak, uh, in favor or against, we'll give you an opportunity to do that.
You know, one of the problems I think you have is, I think the drawing is so nice, honestly, and it makes the house look so big. And it's twenty-two hundred square foot, it's not a big house.
It's not a big house.
That's true.
Not a big lot, but it's not a big house.
Right.
We're trying to make here as comfortable a home as we can, within the constraints of the...
Wonderful.
...style.
Great.
And that's, that was the, the, the brief from the client, and I think that frankly, will fit in very, very well.
Great.
Did you have a question? Do you have a question?
Ma'am, if you...
It's gotta be a question.
Sure.
If you don't have a question, then...
Ma'am, can you state your name?
Michelle Lacantia Mun, Six Strobridge, Johnny.
Am I, you're Michelle, what's your lis, how do you spell your last name?
But, Mun, M-U-N-N.
Okay.
Shortened.
Thank you, your, you can testify.
My, I guess my question is, what, I mean, my comment is, I'm thrilled that you're building, I'm thrilled to have new neighbors. My question is, on the low end, the downhill side, the overall height is forty-six feet from the ground to the peak, and it's a thirty-five foot... Do you speak into the microphone? Thirty-five foot in R3.
The way, the way it's measured, you go around the building, and you take the average height.
Okay, and the, on the low side, the high side, it's thirty-six feet. So, average thirty-six and forty-six, you're still in excess of the maximum height, which I understand that's why we're asking for variance, but you need to grant that variance, the excessive height? Because across the street, there's a two-story house, but the second story is the roof line.
Okay.
The full second story is at the roof line, and uphill, it's a three-story house, but that third story is at the second story of the town.
So, your question is, is do you have to grant the, um, height variance?
Right.
We're about to find out.
And that, and that gets, that gets to the discussion.
I think that this is adversarial, because I'm...
It's not adversarial.
I don't...
Am I missing, is there a height variance?
Yeah.
Or...
I don't see a height variance.
Probably should be one, though.
The pitch point of the roof internally is eight feet, in other words, is the ceiling level, that is the pitch point for the, the ceiling, for the, uh, for the roof line width. So, and it's forty-five degrees, hence the, the height.
She gave some numbers, are they correct?
I'm sorry?
She gave some numbers, are they correct? She said it's forty-eight feet on the outside, thirty-something on the upside.
This is the west. On the west side, the dimensions are on the side of the drawing here, um, the overall height there from the floor level is thirty-three feet.
Okay, and the other side is what?
From the other side, um, you've got approximately ten feet.
Forty-three.
So, you've got approximately forty-three here.
So, the average of those two is...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, which is above the island.
Yeah.
And you're, you're saying to drop the pitch on this would be aesthetically...
I think the pitch helps the house, um, from an arct, arctic, from the Victorian position.
It's really, whether you think two feet is significant.
I know.
Actually, this is not the subject for the variance also.
But, but there is no height variance.
There is.
Well, I think we've, I think we've...
Really?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
Is the building, building is... Is that two feet? And if you think the aesthetics of the building, uh, are of greater weight than the two feet, then you'll vote for the...
Forty-three, thirty, thirty-eight.
Where was it?
Three, four, three.
Thirty-five. And they're looking for thirty-seven?
They got thirty-seven.
That means it's even. If there's more low side than high, it's, it's a little lower.
Yeah.
So, you don't really know what it is. Right, John?
The way the orders is written, you take the average around the house, in this case, all you have to know is the upside-down side, and we know what that is.
Has to be the midpoint?
And that's, you have to do that together, divide by two.
Okay.
You get thirty-seven.
Do you want to ask a question?
Do you want to ask a question? Okay, you have to come up and identify yourself.
Ma'am, for the record, can you please, um, state your name and spell it?
Gabriella Diitalia, D-I-T-A-L-I-A. I also live in Mount Tabor, and I'm just curious what the criteria is for, um, passing the variance. I just wouldn't really know what to ask to be, I mean, I've, I have thoughts about it, but short of just it being commentary, I'm not quite sure what you're interested in hearing to make the variance determination for something like this in the community.
Well, you'll, you're gonna have a chance to give your opinion at the end, where you don't have to ask a question, you could, you're gonna be asked if you wanna speak in favor or against.
I, I mean, I, I...
Just to let you know.
I'm happy they're building, I don't, I would not want to affect the outcome of their dream home, but I, but it's just a real question.
I don't understand.
Like, what's the criteria?
Are you, are you asking, like, procedurally, why we are asking these questions?
You know, is it just the aesthetic versus what they want, versus, you know, I understand the variance is because you have, you know, codes that you're kind of subverting to build these things, so is it just about...
Who answered your questions? Primarily, I think, there's, either has to do with the function of the building or the aesthetics. In this case, it's not the function, it's the aesthetics.
But are you also asking how we're making our judgment to grant the variance that's...
Just like I, you know, the homeowner says, I, I just want this thing, and...
It's a, it's an art, not a science, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Okay, every application stands on its own, uh, there may be precedent to a particular situation, but we may not, the next application might have some different criteria, that we're not gonna follow what we did in, on a previous application. This is, this is kind of a severe situation, not, it's a severe situation because you got a real small lot, and, and I really appreciate what they're trying to do, they're trying to get it, you know, and it's difficult. I mean, you heard the other applications where people are looking to put a patio in, generally, there's no, uh...
It depends on application to application, I mean.
Okay. And we're just, and every, and each board member might have a little different of what they weigh as importance, right? Someone might favor the person building more, someone might favor a resident more. I'm looking to make sure that, for me personally, that you're not hurting a neighbor per se, mostly with drainage and stuff like that. We get applications up here, someone's building a deck, and all the water is gonna run onto their neighbor, so we're looking out for those people. And everybody has a little bit of this and that, on what they weigh as more important. My feeling is if you're not hurting somebody, and it fits in and all that, and it's your property, I tend to wanna let you do what you wanna do. But that could be different for everybody.
And it doesn't seem like their next-door neighbors are here, are they? Are they next-door neighbors?
One is, we have the gentleman in the back.
Oh, he is? Okay. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Well, come on up.
This is important.
Sir, if you'd...
How are you?
Sir, start, uh, state and spell your name and address.
Uh, yes, Jason Castle, uh, you need to spell Jason?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Peter might.
Castle is C-A-S-T-L-E. Um, I think, I think it's great, I'm excited.
Your, uh, address?
What's that?
Address?
Oh, yeah, uh, ten West Heading.
He's, he's the neighbor...
Immediately next to us.
Yeah, the, the one that's, uh, eleven feet.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the one right up the hill that we're just...
Yes. Uh, so my two questions relate to, uh, the lot coverage and the height. So, my wife and I bought our house in July, and one of the things that we have the benefit of is being able to see the mountains, so I wanna know if this height is gonna cut off that view, um, because it seems tall in the pitch of the roof, um, I think it's gonna actually cut off even the view from our bedroom, um, and we're higher up, so maybe, uh, sir, you may, you might be able to answer that. And in the backyard, because of the lot coverage, I don't think we'll be able to see around the house, because the, the lot cover, coverage will cut off that view from the backyard as well. So, we knew something was gonna be built there, and we're excited, um, that there's gonna be a building, we just wanna know if our living room window is gonna be now facing a wall, or if our bedroom, which is above the living room, is gonna have absolutely no view whatsoever, other than the pitch of the roof.
So, could I, John, if, if we're talking about two feet, so if they were to lower it two feet, they would need a variance.
A height variance.
A height variance. So, that might answer one of your questions. I don't know if it's gonna block it or not, but if they were to lower the top by two feet, they would be in accordance.
Okay.
So, I guess the real question is, that extra two feet going to block your view? Because if they lower two feet, they're gonna get what they want, because they're not asking for anything.
Well, so, uh, you have to forgive my ignorance, cause I, I only first saw the plan yesterday when I came in, um, so I didn't, I didn't know the size of the house.
Okay, yeah.
Um, but when I looked at it, uh, it looks more like four stories, but it's only two stories, it just has a really high pitch on the roof, so I, I couldn't even tell you. Um, it just looks like it would cut off our view, both from the backyard and from the bedroom.
The answer to your question is, probably.
Okay.
I would say almost definitely, if we lowered it two feet, it would not alter the situation. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Oh, I follow very, I, I follow clearly, I'm just, I don't know if I agree.
I do not.
Cause I don't, I don't, my first time seeing it was yesterday, thank you, um, but I, I just don't know. And then, uh, the only other, the other question would be about the garage, the three-car garage, um, and that is, I see the way that it's built, but is, how is the access going to, to the third, to the three-car garage going to impact the traffic on the road, right? Because it looks like it's elevated, and I can't really tell from my...
The driveway into the three-car garage pulls from the curb line down.
Got it. Couldn't tell.
Nothing goes up, it's all downhill, because it's actually on the side of the hill. So, the driveway on the upper levels, you're entering at street level and dropping down to the drive.
Alright.
When you go further down, you're even lower.
Got it. I wish I would have had more time to view it, but, perfect.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw something at you, since it, it appears that this is a concern of yours, uh, that we get some sort of, um, elevations, and the effect that this house is going to have, and possibly determine how high his house is, well, maybe not how high his house is, but if we get the elevation on the property and add the house on top of it, and maybe we could do a little drawing that shows, so this gentleman will know exactly what's going to happen, at thirty-six feet. And if at thirty-four feet it doesn't change anything, maybe we don't have anything to do.
So, my wife...
No, we, we can superimpose through an elevation of his property in correct levels, superimpose this over that, so you see exactly what it is.
Why don't you just do a profile, right through his house, downhill, through your proposed house, downhill, and we're gonna be able to see these roof lines.
Something simple that, you know, us, uh, family can understand.
You're roughly lined up with his proposal, who, who outside.
Yes, we're almost.
No, you did, no, you missed, you missed my point. Your house, when they build their house, you drive up the street, they're in line, you're not further back, you're not...
I, I believe we are in line, again, I...
More or less.
I have, I have...
Okay.
The proposal I, or what I saw, I took a picture yesterday, but, cause it's my first time seeing the plan, so I, forgive me for not being able to answer it, but absolutely certain...
But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get some more answers. So, basically, what I'm saying is, I think we need to carry this case until we have more information, okay?
And also...
Can we hear other, just in case there are other questions, so we know if there might be something else we can ask.
Are there any other questions by members of the public?
Height also, can you measure the perimeter and get the average height also, sir?
I have a suggestion that I think this will allow my seventeen, set of...
What'd you say, Chaz, I'm sorry?
Can you hear me?
When they make the resubmission, please do eleven by seventeen versus the large-size prints.
Okay, okay, alright. Alright. When can we carry this case to North?
April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, we'll carry this case, do we need extension of time?
Um, that, we'll get it just in case.
It's a what, what?
Get it just in case.
Okay. We, uh, we're gonna carry this case to April nineteenth, there will not be any further notice publicly, the notice you're getting right now is the notice, okay? And you're gonna need to give us an extension of time, probably until April thirtieth for the time being, okay? Agree to that? Okay, a motion to carry this case to April nineteenth?
So moved.
And after the notice, we're, we're up all required extensions? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just wa, I just wanna say something to the public here. We often get neighbors coming, and typically, when we get neighbors coming in large numbers, they're really not happy, but what I heard tonight was a lot of very polite neighbors. It was the nicest...
Agreed.
Agreed.
Honestly, like I'm thinking, I gotta move into this community. You guys are so nice.
If you wanna build it and sell it, I'll take it.
I've done this many, I've done this many, many times in other jurisdictions.
You know what we're talking about.
I certainly agree with you. Best neighbors you could have.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see if we can knock off this Diitalia, what a beautiful name. Oh, my goodness. Gabriella, that is beautiful. I assume, I assume your family is, your heritage?
Thank my parents for the name.
Where, from where, what's her?
Where, where in Italy, well, from Garfield, New Jersey.
No, I mean in Italy.
There's a lot of Sicily in this.
Uh, I'm, I'm a Sijic.
Raise your right hand. You swore firm testimony about to give before the board's truth self you got. For the record, you are Gabriella Diitalia. You're owner of seventy-one East Mars Avenue. Thank you, ma'am. You're sworn. Have a seat. Please do your mark.
Okay, so we are, oops, what am I doing here? I lost my paper. Okay, you're, uh, you're the, 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 once, you construct a one-story vestibule addition, landing and stairs. Landing, stairs, open deck. Okay. You wanna tell us what you'd like to do?
Sure. Um, the, it's a typical cape, nineteen forties cape, so you walk directly from the front door into, um, a small entryway that maybe is a cup, two and a half feet, maybe three feet, and, um, into the stairway, which is enclosed, that goes up to the second floor. Um, there's a door there, so you, both of the doors kind of crash into one another, um, when you open them. Um, and on, in addition to that, you're also in the living room essentially, so piles of shoes, things like that, cold air, all of that stuff. It's just a very typical cape architecture, so we're proposing to extend, um, onto the existing front, um, stoop, a little portico, so that when you walk into the house, you have like a three-foot by, um, I think it's
Five.
Five-foot entry landing, so the doors aren't pushing into each other, so you can have a hook for a coat and put your shoes outside the living room.
And this is, um, Mount Tabor as well?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
The, um...
And then there's, so that's one piece of it, and the other piece is, um, expanding the kitchen into what is currently now a screened-in porch and rebuilding the porch off of the back.
The plan shows a proposed deck. Is that the existing porch?
The proposal is for a new deck on the back of the house on the north side. The existing porch is where the kitchen, um, addition is going.
That's the one-story addition?
Mm-hmm.
So that's already coverage. It's a porch?
It's a porch. It's a roof. Yes.
Got a roof too?
Sorry, John.
The deck is a standard deck. Water goes through the planks?
Yes.
I see there's no engineering letter in the file. Have they looked at this at all regarding the drainage issue? Might be created?
Not that I know of.
That may have to be one of the conditions if it was to be looked at.
It's, it's always in the resolution that the files, towns, professionals, it's a catchall. So you would agree that whatever the engineer would want to make it work, you would be doing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess the question I have coverage-wise is, how much you have, how can you have so much driveway?
For Mount Tabor?
Actually, for, for anywhere. It's, it seems like you have a lot of driveway with no garage.
There is a garage.
Oh.
It's a one-car garage.
How do you get into it?
By pulling down the driveway and into the back underneath the house.
Oh, the whole house, okay. What, you back into it?
I actually don't use it, because the, the driveway isn't that big, and it's actually hard to get a car in, and right now, we're, it's, um, storing all of the kitchen cabinets as we wait, so.
So you've got all street parking with half of the...
A relatively large lot, too, six thousand five hundred square feet.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none and see none.
If the rest application, coverage is the minimum.
It covers the minimum, yes. Then you don't want to add anything else, do you?
No, I won't. No, I don't.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. It's a good application for, uh, Mount Tabor?
Yep.
Someone frame a resolution.
I got it. Uh, application number twenty-two seventy-eight, Gabriella Diitalia, seventy-one East Mars Avenue, block forty-six, lot eight, in the R3 zone. I recommend that the board grant the C variance to construct a one-story vestibule addition, landing and stairs, one-story addition, landing and stairs, and open deck with stairs, contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns ten and thirteen.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora call the rule.
Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, Chaplin, Missarella, Reddy.
Yes.
Articain.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize at our next meeting. You'll be free to proceed.
Thank you.
Only have six?
Well, that's right. In case he's gone.
Where's Davey? Nora, were you expecting Davey?
Uh, there was a possibility he could come late, but...
So you have six, Joe, or Davey?
Ready's coming back.
All right, let's take a five-minute break.
You have six.
I heard how she was popping.
You see, I have just one. Three, yeah, we'd never get three.
Okay.
You?
You got a date? You got a date, uh?
May fourth, May seventeenth.
May seventeenth. Give us an extension through May thirtieth?
All extensions through the end of May?
End of May, May thirty-first. Yes. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. It's a go.
Thank you.
I was with your cousin today.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I was doing his taxes. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
See everybody in two weeks.
I'll get about two hours of work tomorrow.